I'd like to call to order the Rutherford County School System Regular Meeting, December 7th, 2023. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Young?
I would like to invite Mr. Reese Stubblefield up to do our pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do something a little bit different tonight. As Dr. Sullivan often says, sometimes my teacher just comes through. And tonight, I'm going to let my teacher come through. I, for many, many years, taught a Christmas carol. And I just told my principal back there, Mr. Butch Bond, that this was for him. He needs to listen to a little bit more of Sheila reading out of her Christmas carol. This is going to set our tone for tonight, okay? As we well know, Scrooge was not the happiest man in the face of the earth. And he becomes even more bitter as the story goes on until he's visited. I'm going back to when his nephew comes in to wish him a Merry Christmas. "A Merry Christmas, Uncle. God save you," cried a cheerful voice. "Bah, humbug," said Scrooge. "Christmas, a humbug, Uncle. You don't mean that, I'm sure." "I do. Merry Christmas. What right have you to be merry? What reason have you to be merry? You're poor enough. Come then. What right have you to be dismal? What reason you have to be morose? You're rich enough." Scrooge, having no better answer, ready on the spot, said again, "Bah, humbug." "Don't be cross," said the nephew. "Uncle, nephew, keep Christmas in your way and let me keep it in mine." The nephew says, "There are many things from which I might have derived good, by which I have not profited, Christmas among the rest. But I'm sure I have always thought of Christmastime, when it comes around, apart from the veneration due to its sacred name and origin. If anything belonging to it can be apart from that, as a good time, a kind, forgiving, charitable, pleasant time, the only time that I know of in the long calendar of the year, when men and women seem by one consent to open their shut-up hearts freely and to think of people below them as if they really were fellow passengers to the grave and not just another race of creatures bound on a journey. And therefore, Uncle, though it has never put a scrap of gold or silver in my pocket, I believe that it has done me good and will do me good, and I say God bless it." As we all know, Scrooge was visited by three spirits who changed his mind. And at the very end of our book, it says, "He had no further intercourse with the spirits, but lived upon the total abstimmance principle ever after. And it is always said of him that he knew how to keep Christmas well, if any man allowed possessed that knowledge. May that be truly said of all of us." And so, as Tiny Tim observed, God bless us, everyone. I'd like to have a moment of silence, and I would like to remember Ms. Amy Baltimore, who is having some health issues and not feeling well. Thank you. We will move on to the approval of the agenda.
Do I have any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Number five, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone wishing to abstain? The motion is approved. We will now go to number six. Mr. Dr. Sullivan, Rutherford County.
And I'll introduce Dr. Lindsay Halford, our Fine Arts Coordinator, who's going to tell us a little bit about Smyrna High School Choir.
Good evening, everyone. Well, Ms. Breton got us in the holiday spirit, starting out with that reading, and we are going to continue that this evening with a performance by the Smyrna High School Choir. We have a lot of musical and choral excellence in our district, and Smyrna High School Choir is a great example of that. District-wide, Rutherford County recently had the most students chosen for mid-state and all-state honors out of any mid-state district. And actually, we have done that every year as far back as I can remember. Smyrna High School is a great example. They recently, this past spring, received all superior ratings at the mid-state and all-state Concert Performance Assessment, which is the highest ratings possible at those events. This year, at recent auditions, they had 22 students chosen for all county choir, 15 students chosen for mid-state choir, and eight students chosen for all-state choir. If you're one of those mid-state students, would you raise your hand so we can recognize you? And where are our all-state students, all-staters? This choir is conducted by Mr. Garrett Dew and Ms. Anna Cooper. Recently, Mr. Dew was recognized as one of the CMA Music Teachers of Excellence, which is a national award recognizing excellence in music educators across the country. Congratulations to Mr. Dew. So we're thankful to have these folks with us tonight. They're going to sing three songs for us to get us in that holiday spirit. Thank you all, and enjoy their performance.
Thank you again to Dr. Halford for inviting us. My name is Mr. Dew. This is Ms. Cooper. The three songs we're singing for you today came from our concert, which happened two days ago. We're singing Circa Mea by Mark Burrows, Il Éme Le Devin Enfant, also by Mark Burrows, and then a peanuts classic, Linus and Lucy. So you know that one. Où se camiera, se camiera, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, sous la lune, sous la lune. Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, sous la lune. Je dois mourir, je dois mourir, et je veux mourir, je veux mourir. Je dois mourir, je dois mourir, si je suis mort, je dois mourir, si je suis mort, je dois mourir, je dois mourir, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour moi, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et pour me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et for me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, et for me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, et for me, tout à souffre, tout à souffre, sous la lune, Circa mea, Circa mea, Circa mea, and for me, it's a miracle. I'm here tonight because of the future of Rutherford County as schools hanging in the balance. I am a teacher and a parent in Rutherford County, and have a vested interest in what happens in the next coming years. We all know the unprecedented growth taking place in the cities of Murfreesboro, Rockvale, and Laverne and surrounding areas. This should come as no surprise because Rutherford County is a great place to live. We should be honored that people are coming all over the world, all over the country for our beautiful land, great culture, friendly people, and fantastic schools. I myself have been here for the past five and a half years, and my family moved here, and we love this place. I was a teacher in Texas for 13 years, and at that time, I worked with two different school districts, Conner I S D and Spring I S D. Both districts boasted outstanding metrics when they first moved there. Both districts experienced significant growth during the time we were there. But only one, Conner I S D, was able to manage the growth with an effective way and continue to have outstanding metrics. Spring I S D, on the other hand, faded to mediocrity as they grew larger. I worry that the board does not fully grasp the urgency of the situation we are in. We cannot simply rezone the unprecedented growth we have. We cannot simply go to the county commission with hat in hand and ask for the money to build new schools. Neither can we go to the county commission with a five-year plan, no matter how well-received, and to request money to build new schools. Those are not the best options. I coach both swimming and track. I would love to come to the school board and be able to simply ask you guys for money for a swimming pool in South County, to easily overcome a swimming pool at Riverdale. I would also love to ask you for money for a pole vault pit at Blackman High School, because we have the same, so we have the same needs as other schools, but no pole vault pit. I know that Rutherford County's board is not my rich uncle Fred. If I want a pole vault pit or even a swimming pool, no matter how needed, I'm going to have to do some of the legwork myself. I'm not suggesting that the board fundraise exactly, but at the very least, you need to look at the situation in two different lenses. There are myriad ways to raise money besides just going to the county commission. Two quick ideas, but I've got plenty more I can share at future board meetings. One, seeking help from builders. Builders are benefiting from Rutherford County's amazing, amazing, amazingness without reciprocating and getting back to the community. Some laws might need to be changed in order for this to make such builder-board teamwork possible, but working with our local state representatives can help ease, can help make such a goal a reality. Indeed, a language has come out of the county mayor's office recently that would seem to indicate that they are on board with making such changes, and how builders may operate could be something that's on the table. Two, partnering with local businesses to help build schools. The proposed middle school on the Beatty property is quite close to the hospital corridor on the west side of Murfreesboro. M M C, T O A, Ascension St. Thomas, and Vanderbilt, all of the locations in that area, would be great partners to help build a school, and even greater partners to help instruct up-and-coming students in a medical pathway. Think of the instruction in a medical pathway would benefit from such a partnership. I'm just a teacher and a parent. I don't have the power you guys do, but I urge you and encourage you to think of things outside the box and make good changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Dr. Sullivan?
And next, we have a guest speaker with us. We have Reese Stubblefield Stevens, a Blackman High School, Blackman Collegiate Academy student, to present his capstone project, "The Retention of Literacy in a Digital Age" to the board. So congratulations on being here to this step.
Thank you, sir. I'm excited. Shall I just begin? Oh, let me get set up first. Something's just a bit amiss. I've got all you fine folks in front of me, I've got this stage to myself, and I'm all dressed up in my nice Sunday clothes. So why on earth am I lugging around this squid plushy? Well, first off, this squid, whom I affectionately dubbed Billy the Squid, belongs to the species that formed the basis of our understanding of literacy. The squid is an incredible creature. We all know of its ability to squeeze into tiny spaces, spurt ink to deter predators. But what's most fascinating about this guy is its central axon, the long neuron running down the length of its body. In years long past, scientists realized that this axon's length makes it an ideal candidate for studying neuronal functions. They gleaned some fascinating tidbits of information from the squid, how synapses function, a foundation for comprehending dyslexia. Most importantly, though, our studies of the squid revealed an incredibly important property of the brain, plasticity. Summarily, plasticity is the brain's ability to restructure its own neurons, adapting itself to whatever is demanded of it. This quality is responsible for a faculty rendered miraculous by its own existence, a faculty utterly essential for functioning in the modern age, and a faculty under assault, a quiet, subtle, stealthy one, but an assault nonetheless. Members of the board, my name is Reese Stevens, and my topic is literacy in a digital age. Let's dig in. Now, literacy is a term ubiquitous, surrounded by a remarkable lack of misunderstanding. We know that literacy means the capacity to read, but there's a great deal more to it. As with any complex matter, we must first grasp how it develops to totally understand it. I have some black slides separating the other ones, so it's like, still, I think it's working. Maybe not. Excellent, okay. Akin to Bilbo Baggins, literacy is a hero that arose from humble beginnings. According to Dr. Mary Ann Wolf, it began in the angular gyrus, a region of the brain dedicated to the basic deduction of information. Then the Sumerians and Egyptians came along, bearing with them cuneiform and hieroglyphics, respectively. These pictographs taught us to associate new concepts with them, exercising the brain's plasticity and causing it to adapt to a new challenge, and so, the angular gyrus developed. The Egyptians ran into a roadblock, though. As it turns out, the world's got a lot of stuff in, and memorizing all of those things got very convoluted very quickly. Fortunately, the Greeks solved that problem with their alphabetic system, encoding information into combinations of sounds and characters. Easy to remember, with boundless potential for growth, the angular gyrus developed to match the Grecian alphabet, granting us the ability to articulate thoughts never before written. This is the miracle of literacy. Every child that learns to read speeds through generations of development, following the trek of their ancestors across a starlit road that shoots off into infinity. The capacity to read, even something so vital, is not insured, not intrinsic. It must be learnt, and the brain's plasticity allows this improbable wonder to take root. Beyond that, literacy is linked to theory of mind. In layman's terms, that's the ability to understand those unlike ourselves. Dr. Mary Ann Wolf, a rock star in the world of literacy, says that reading is the contemplative function that underlies the moral heart of human behavior. Literacy governs our propensity for critical thinking, for deep contemplation. This highlights why literacy is so indispensable, especially in America, a land of democracy, where a populace of high moral fiber and deep thought is a prerequisite for success. Now, I imagine this whole plasticity deal is sounding pretty great right about now, right? And it is. Without plasticity, so much of what makes us human would be gone. All that said, though, plasticity is a double-edged blade, especially in the case of literacy. What is learned isn't inherent to the brain. It has to be maintained, exercised, just like any other skill. If you expose a bike to the elements without cease, without tending to it, it's going to start rusting.
Thank you.
What's this school today? Hi, good evening board members. I am here tonight because of the future of Rutherford County as schools hanging in the balance. I am a teacher and a parent in Rutherford County and have this vested interest in what happens next coming years. We all know the unprecedented goal taking place in the cities of Murfreesboro, Rockvale, and Laverne and surrounding areas. This should come as no surprise because Rutherford County is a great place to live. We should be honored that people are coming all over the, all over the world, all over the country for our beautiful land, great culture, friendly people, and fantastic schools. I myself have been here for the past five and a half years with my family moved here and we, and we love this place. I was a teacher in Texas for 13 years and at that time I worked with two different school districts, Connor ISD and Spring ISD. Both districts boasted outstanding metrics when they first, when we first moved there. Both districts experienced significant growth during the time we were there. But only one, Connor ISD, was able to manage the growth with the, in an effective way and continue to have outstanding metrics. Spring ISD on the other hand faded to mediocrity as they grew larger. I worry that the board does not fully grasp the urgency of the situation we are in. We cannot simply rezone the unprecedented growth we have. We cannot simply go to the county commission with hat in hand and ask for the money to build new schools. Neither can we go to the county commission with a five-year plan no matter how well received and the request of money to build new schools. Those are not the best options. I coach both swimming and track. I would love to come to the school board and be able to simply ask you guys for money for a swimming pool in South County to easily overcome a swimming pool at Riverdale. I would also love to ask you for money for a pole vault pit at Blackman High School because we have the same, so we have the same needs as other schools but no, no pole vault pit. I know that Rutherford County's board is not my rich, my rich uncle Fred. If I want a pole vault pit or even a swimming pool no matter how needed, I'm going to have to do some of the legwork myself. I'm not suggesting that the board fundraise exactly, but at the very least you need to look at the situation through different lenses. There are myriad ways to raise money besides just going to the county commission. Two quick ideas, but I've got plenty more I can share at future board meetings. One, seeking help from builders. Builders are benefiting from Rutherford County's amazing, amazing, amazingness without reciproc- yeah, builders are benefiting from Rutherford County's amazingness without reciprocitating and getting back to the community. Some laws might need to be changed in order for this to make such builder board teamwork possible, but working with our local state representatives can help ease, can help make such a goal a reality. Indeed, a language has come out of the county mayor's office recently that would seem to indicate that they are on board with making such changes and how builders, builders may operate could be something that's on the table. Two, partnering with local businesses to help build schools. Repose Middle School on the Beatty property is quite close to the hospital corridor on the west side of Murfreesboro. MMC, TOA, Ascension St. Thomas, and Vanderbilt, all of the locations in that area would be great partners to help build a school and even greater partners to help instruct up, up and coming students in a medical pathway. Think of the instruction in a medical pathway would benefit, benefit from such a, from such a partnership. I'm just a teacher and a parent. I don't have the power you guys do, but I urge you and encourage you to think of things outside the box and make good changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Dr. Sullivan?
And next we have a guest speaker with us. We have Reese Doublefield Stevens, a Blackman High School, Blackman Collegiate Academy student to present his capstone project, the retention of literacy in a digital age to the board. So congratulations on being here to this step.
Thank you, sir. I'm excited. Shall I just begin? Oh, let me get set up first. You know, this reminds me of Where's Waldo. Something's just a bit amiss. I've got all you fine folks in front of me. I've got this stage to myself and I'm all dressed up in my nice Sunday clothes. So why on earth am I lugging around this squid plushy? Well, first off, this squid whom I affectionately dubbed Billy the Squid belongs to the species that formed the basis of our understanding of literacy. The squid is an incredible creature. We all know of its ability to squeeze into tiny spaces, spurt ink to deter predators. But what's most fascinating about this guy is its central axon, the long neuron running down the length of its body. In years long past, scientists realized that this axon's length makes it an ideal candidate for studying neuronal functions. They gleaned some fascinating tidbits of information from the squid, how synapses function, a foundation for comprehending dyslexia. Most importantly though, our studies of the squid revealed an incredibly important property of the brain, plasticity. Summarily, plasticity is the brain's ability to restructure its own neurons, adapting itself to whatever is demanded of it. This quality is responsible for a faculty rendered miraculous by its own existence, a faculty utterly essential for functioning in the modern age, and a faculty under assault, a quiet, subtle, stealthy one, but an assault nonetheless. Members of the board, my name is Reese Stevens and my topic is literacy in a digital age. Let's dig in. Now literacy is a term ubiquitous, is a ubiquitous term surrounded by a remarkable lack of misunderstanding. We know that literacy means the capacity to read, but there's a great deal more to it. As with any complex matter, we must first grasp how it develops to totally understand it. I have some black slides separating the other ones, so it's like, still, I think it's working. Maybe not. Akin to Bilbo Baggins, literacy is a hero that arose from humble beginnings. According to Dr. Mary Ann Wolf, it began in the angular gyrus, a region of the brain dedicated to the basic deduction of information. Then the Sumerians and Egyptians came along bearing with them cuneiform and hieroglyphics respectively. These pictographs taught us to associate new concepts with them, exercising the brain's plasticity and causing it to adapt to a new challenge, and so the angular gyrus developed. The Egyptians ran into a roadblock though. As it turns out, the world's got a lot of stuff in it and memorizing all of those things got very convoluted very quickly. Fortunately, the Greeks solved that problem with their alphabetic system, encoding information into combinations of sounds and characters. Easy to remember with boundless potential for growth, the angular gyrus developed to match the Grecian alphabet, granting us the ability to articulate thoughts never before written. This is the miracle of literacy. Every child that learns to read speeds through generations of development, following the trek of their ancestors across a starlet road that shoots off into infinity. The capacity to read even something so vital is not insured, not intrinsic. It must be learnt and the brain's plasticity allows this improbable wonder to take root. Beyond that, literacy is linked to theory of mind. In layman's terms, that's the ability to understand those unlike ourselves. Dr. Mary Ann Wolf, a rock star in the world of literacy, says that reading is the contemplative function that underlies the moral heart of human behavior. Literacy governs our propensity for critical thinking, for deep contemplation. This highlights why literacy is so indispensable, especially in America, a land of democracy where a populace of high moral fiber and deep thought is a prerequisite for success. Now I imagine this whole plasticity deal is sounding pretty great right about now, right? And it is. Without plasticity, so much of what makes us human would be gone. All that said though, plasticity is a double-edged blade, especially in the case of literacy. What is learned isn't inherent to the brain. It has to be maintained, exercised just like any other skill. If you expose a bike to the elements without cease, without tending to it, it's going to start rusting. And same as that bike, literacy rusts along with the qualities linked to it. Evidently, that rust has already commenced considering that the U.S. Department of Education found 54% of adults to have below a sixth grade pros literacy level in 2020. Aside from disuse though, literacy is under assault from two things, both so effectively disguised that you never even realize an assault is underway. The first is skimming and that isn't really a problem that is relevant to what I'm speaking about you today because it lies mostly with our tests. The second though, is just as insidious as skimming, yet bears with it convenience unmatched. Reading medium, as it turns out, has a monumental impact on literacy and comprehension and a negative impact in the case of literacy, or a negative impact in the case of digital reading. In 2018, researcher Dahang Golan assembled 82 fifth and sixth grade students, then had them take two comprehension tests, one with material on paper and one all digital. In 2013, researcher Anne Mangen conducted a similar study, this time with 72 10th graders in Norway. Researcher Pablo Delgado in 2021 performed a variation of these studies, this time with 140 undergraduates. Without exception, students across these experiments performed worse on the digital tests. Delgado's study also showed that on-screen readers had a tougher time of staying on task. Researcher Verid Halamesh in 2022 found that it's easier to learn languages on screen rather than on print. But I want to take us deeper into the very fabric of the brain. In 2023, researcher Evelyn Law conducted a study showing the relationship between cognitive development and infant screen use, shown in this table. Now it's not on the screen, but I'm going to pretend it is. I don't know about you all, but I have a deathly fear of graphs, so let's break this down. In essence, brain activity was hampered when exposed to high screen use and also revealed burgeoning attention issues across the 437 children. Most fascinating though, is a 2023 study by Michael Zivon in which electroencephalography or EEG scans were taken of 15 six to eight-year-olds while reading from screen versus print. The results of that screen, of that scan are contained in this table. These show higher activity in theta and alpha bands when reading from screens, higher beta and gamma activity on paper, and a higher theta to beta ratio when reading from screens versus print. In essence, it means that reading from screens invariably produces issues with attentiveness and fundamentally degrades literacy. According to a cross-disciplinary study compiled by Anne Mangen in 2008, there is something about the haptic response of a page, the sensational response to physicality that brands itself onto the surface of our minds. The very act of turning a page, dog-earing a corner establishes an uncompromising geometry, one suited for comprehension. Now, I'm not trying to paint devil horns on computers and call it a day. Innovation is a good thing, an inevitable thing. Without innovation, we wouldn't have literacy and the opportunities screens afford students are profoundly valuable. Rutherford County somewhat recently invested in tons of laptops for its students, a decisive and intelligent move. That said, while it is impractical to focus on phasing screens out for the benefit of literacy, it is also prudent to recognize that the written word must not be diminished for the benefit of efficiency. While I did present this information to you, the board, on merit of your influence in making decisions, I understand that a lot is out of your control and I can't claim to understand the inner workings of the obstruse American education system as a high school student. As a result of that, most of my solutions are pretty small in scope. First up, we must continue the use of print. If you have the option between a print and digital textbook, try to use the print one. It's the same idea with assignments, though there are certainly complicating factors I don't know anything about. Next, have educational coaches know the science behind the benefits of a print medium and promote its use. I'm more than happy to contribute data and effort to help synthesize a crash course if you need that. It might also behoove you to filter decisions regarding education through this research. Using physical mediums can really only be beneficial. In the end, supporting print in any way we can is a noble effort. It's an uphill battle for, for all of us considering how little known this data is. But ultimately, we all live together and together we will prevail. Well, I think that about wraps up our time together. Those pamphlets you have contain some quick reference facts pertaining to literacy along with my personal emails, three of them. Please, I implore you, email me with any questions. I took some big swings here, made some big claims. A healthy dose of skepticism is good. I'll gladly send you any of my sources, my literature review, or get you in contact with people more knowledgeable than I. Though if there's one thing I want you to take away from this presentation, let it be this. Literacy is not abstract or malleable or intangible. It is scaldingly aggressively physical and demands a medium that suits it. We are obliged to acquiesce. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Wow. Anyone have any questions? I, I'm a yawn. Okay, Dr. Sullivan?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that as a director of schools, I don't get to have the daily interaction with students that I did as a principal and seeing not just you but our other Blackman Collegiate Academy students and just our students across the district, despite any negativity that may be out there, I'm very proud of the work that our students do and you, your teachers, your principals should be committed, so great job.
And we're very thankful for you.
Yes. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Yeah, it was wonderful.
Thank you for having me. It was excellent.
In other words, put away your Kindle, pick up that book, right?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reese. Number nine, rezoning update.
So rezoning update, again, this was left off when we did our special call in November. Board has options for grandfathering as I mentioned on Tuesday. My recommendation is to offer seniors, which are the current sophomores for 2025, 2026, the grandfather option, but any options available to the board.
Questions or comments? No questions or comments? Oh my goodness.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tidwell.
Dr. Sullivan, could you just go over the reasons for why?
Yeah.
That is, that you make that recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
From a student standpoint, I've mentioned this, I'd hate to rezone anybody. But when I'm looking at it from a logistics standpoint, anytime we grandfather, even grandfathering seniors has some, not only financial concerns, but some logistics concerns. I mentioned Riverdale and Rockvale is the example for right now. We rezoned Rockvale and Riverdale two years ago. Rockvale is still sitting overcrowded because we haven't experienced that full grandfathering yet. That would be the reason as you're looking at duplicity of services, I'm going to have to keep the same number of staff at both schools depending on who moves and who doesn't. I don't, I don't like that. I would much rather grandfather, recommend grandfathering both of them, but I have to operate it as the business aspect of it as well. So, hope that answers your question.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Darby?
I will make a motion. I would like to grandfather both juniors and seniors in.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second, we will vote. Do you want to do roll call or do you? Okay. I think we need to do roll call vote.
Mrs. Rosales?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Tidwell?
No.
Mrs. Maxwell?
No.
Mrs. Darby?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Motion passes. Thank you. So it will be juniors and seniors that will be.
Which are the current freshmen and sophomores.
Number 10, curriculum and instruction.
Next we have curriculum and instruction tab two, so transformational leader implementation training. School counseling departments requesting year two of transformational leader implementation training. This training we provided for key leaders in our schools K-12 and district personnel will enhance the implementation of educator resilience professional development workshops. Resilient Schools Communities Grant will fund 12-month access to the online training kits for all schools, $75,000, and in-person training, $14,000, at a cost not to exceed $89,000. Recommended motions to approve the Resilient Schools Communities Grant at a cost of $89,000 for training taking place February 26th and 27th, 2024.
Questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? The motion passes. Number two.
Madam Chair, can I go back to rezoning to make something clear real quick?
You sure can.
So there is no rezoning for high school for next year. So anybody watching, there's nobody's impacted next year, so nobody has to provide their own transportation, any of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Great point.
That's probably.
Yes, no, no high school students are rezoned next year.
All right, good. Number two.
All right, the ESL department's requesting the approval of a new job description. District-wide ESL coach with an emphasis in tier-one instruction. As our English learner population continues to rise over 7,000 students, this position will provide support for classroom teachers on best practices with ESL students they serve. Recommended motion to approve a new job description for a district-wide ESL coach. This position will be funded through Title III funds for the remainder of the 23-24 school year.
Questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Miss Turnbow is granted. Number three.
Number three, new job description coordinator of teaching and learning. Curriculum instruction department's requesting the approval of a new job description coordinator of teaching and learning. This position will play a critical role in the improvement, alignment, communication, and impact of the current instructional systems and practices within our district. Recommended motion to approve a new job description coordinator of teaching and learning. This position will be funded through GP funds and replace a vacated specialist position. Future increase in the cost of index from a specialist 1.15 to coordinator 1.25 will be covered through additional right sizing of positions and job duties within the instruction
Questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Number 11, school safety.
So tab three, this is defense systems intruder action and rapid response medical training for up to 5,900 personnel in a trauma kit per school. The estimate's $147,500 to be paid out of Safe Schools and Public Schools Security Grant. Recommended motions to approve the use of $147,500 from Safe Schools to be used to hire defense systems to train 5,900 personnel in intruder action and medical training for Rutherford County schools as presented. I'd like to say just a couple things if that's okay.
Yes, I would like for you to.
Yeah, I figured. So there's been a lot of conversation around this. I think regardless of the decisions, we all want to agree that even if we have different viewpoints on what is the best way to keep our kids safe, ultimately we all have the heart in making sure that we keep our kids safe. Our SROs doing an amazing job along with all of our emergency management services and making sure that we keep our schools safe, but I also want to make sure that we are doing every single thing possible in covering ourselves in the event of a tragedy. And so our SROs are absolutely the, the, the real expert in our buildings, in our district. I want to make sure that as the director of schools, I can sleep at night knowing I've done every single thing possible. When we watch some of those trainings, I can't help but think about some of those dots as people I know, my own children in the school system. And so that's truly where my recommendation comes from. I think of SROs as the keystone and then any other supplemental training we do just as kind of the support systems. And so that's what my recommendation is. And if it doesn't work, we won't do it again.
Do I have any other comments?
Ms. Bratton?
Yes, ma'am.
So I will, in addition to this motion about defense systems, I would like to propose an alternative motion. As our county's trained public safety officers have extensive first responder and medical training and can provide ongoing training rather than one-time training for these, one-time training for these factors, I move to utilize the county's trained public safety officers to provide security, training, including firsthand medical training to our staff as well as hands-on training as in other than utilizing defense systems.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Do I have a second?
Second. Now questions or comments?
Yes. Good job.
Could I speed? Madam Chair?
Yes, you may, Mr. Tidwell.
So in comparison to these two, I agree with the comments from Dr. Sullivan that this, this is just supplemental to what we're already doing adds, it's a specialized training. There is law enforcement that have been trained by this, higher ed campuses that have taken this training and they are training for TBI. It's covered underneath this grant which have already been approved through, through health and ed. It's no additional cost to the county. So I would be still in line with the original recommended motion and continue, you know, for this year. And I think that's the, the way it was presented as to get that supplemental addition this year and then look toward our local to come up with their own curriculum by the time we arrive at this time next year.
Any other comments?
Ms. Bratton?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I would like to say that this proposal, the way it's come to us is a prime example of why due diligence is very, very crucial and why adhering to an RFP process is very important and including obtaining codes and bids, vetting vendors, even for services classified under professional services. Failing to conduct due diligence is a sin. And I would like to bring up the following concerns. Number one, stakeholders were not included in the discussion about bringing this type of training to the district. Number two, the right individuals were overlooked to bring to the discussion because of this. We fell short in understanding what resources are already available and being offered. And number three, the costs and specific details of the training proposal remain unclear and had not been clarified prior to presenting the proposal on the agenda on Tuesday, which since we have learned consists of two-hour lecture and hour medical training. And as a result, we failed to recognize in collaboration with the sheriff and EMT, the county's public safety officers already offers training for active shooter situations. They can also create a training that is just as comparable to the proposal. They can provide not only the lecture and medical response, but also the hands-on experience. Their only request is to be granted the necessary time to deliver the comprehensive training and for us to tell them what we need. There was only one vendor asked to present by the board, to present by a board member in September. It is a valid inquiry to question why this vendor is deemed superior, especially considering the board has only been, been presented with one proposal. I would like to know more about the other vendors that were considered, their offerings, and what differentiates them from the chosen vendor. These are legitimate and valid questions to ask considering the board is asked to vote on something of this nature. I aim to accomplish this last night at the executive session. It is our job to do our due diligence. And for comparison's sake, Pelhorz TRS is another company who can train 5,900 staff members for $125,000. That's $2,500 per, per school. And the training encompasses a variety of components conducted at the school. They can come to the school, they can come to wherever, it doesn't have to be at the school, but they can train everyone at the same time. And the training includes a lecture that focuses on prevention and a breakdown of previous shootings and the ABCs of what to do from beginning to end, medical training as well as hands-on training. Since board members can bring vendors for consideration by bypassing the RFP process, I would like to propose this options since it falls under professional services. What makes this training on the agenda a better choice since there has not been any vetting to compare other companies? Why isn't the board taking the initiative to request a director to collaborate with a school safety director, EMT, and sheriff to implement a similar training plus more for our entire district since these resources are at our disposal? The county's trained public safety officers said to all of us, they can be ready by January 6th.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Darby?
We were all here last night, so we all know, so I'm just going to kind of speak to the public to kind of lay out what has been going on. We absolutely discussed working with the county last night. We spoke about building a program so that all of our schools will have the same exact training which is not currently happening. Nobody is denying them an opportunity, nobody is any of the sort, all of us up here. training, which is not currently happening. Nobody is denying them an opportunity. Nobody is any of the sort, all of us up here. I think everybody in our county appreciates our county sheriff, appreciates our SROs. They do an amazing job. The public does not know the training that Defense Systems does is a completely different thing than the current training that the county is doing. We discussed giving the county an opportunity to build some kind of a curriculum similar to what Defense Systems does to be used later. We are trying to prevent pushing this off further and getting our teachers the training that they need when they need it, which is quite frankly, yesterday. This has been being talked about publicly at meetings for months on end. If a board member wanted to look at other vendors, nobody was stopping them. To come to the table at the ninth hour and try to paint a picture like people didn't do their job is just not a fair and accurate comparison. Any board member that would like to bring a vendor can bring a vendor. We've had salary study companies, we had zoning study companies, we've had all kinds of companies come. There is nothing preventing any board member from bringing anybody to the table. So... With that said, I'd like to make a motion if that's okay, but we may not be to that point yet.
I have a motion on the floor. Already have a motion on the floor. Okay, so we've, we've got to vote on that first.
Question real quick, comment?
Dr. Sullivan?
I'll be quick, I just want to bring up the purchasing. So there are two options that allow the board to move forward or the director. So as policy 2.805, which is purchasing, there are, there's a section under emergency purchases. Emergency purchases are those which are necessary to avert hazards which threaten health or safety. So that is one option. You also have board policy, because I know this is going to come up somewhere. Policy 2.806, contracts for legal services, educational consultant services from the insurance provider and similar services by professional persons or groups of high ethical standards shall not be based upon competitive bids, but will instead will be awarded on the basis of recognized competency and integrity. For me, working with a TBI doesn't get any further than that.
Madam Chair?
Wait, yes, sir. Mr. Young?
Is this mandatory for all of our employees?
It will be, yes.
So what, what are we going to do in a situation where we have employee that does not want to go through this training?
It would be like any other type of training that we do. If they're out, we'll have a makeup training.
I'm talking about if they don't want to attend the training, period.
We would handle that through HR. I can't give you an exact answer. I don't know why someone wouldn't, but...
Well, if you have people that have issues with seeing some of the things that's went on with some of these shootings, it heavily impacts them. And some people do not want to sit through that. I've talked to a few teachers and I had one teacher tell me that she had preferred the training to be on hand in the classroom and actually show where the safe spots are in that classroom, because every classroom is different. But really didn't care anything about going and sitting through a presentation for three or four hours. And this is a pretty hefty price tag we're paying this company. That's, it roughly $50,000 an hour we're paying here. I'm all for safety. I've always supported safety. But we need to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. We did get a contact, a contact today by commissioner that said we need to be working on door locks. We have other issues that we could fix right now and we're not addressing those issues. So... That's my concern about all of this. Are we spending our money wisely? Is there other things that we should be looking at? And it's just a prioritizing issue.
Ms. Sharp?
$25 per employee is nothing to spend to keep our teachers safe. We always say if something's going to happen, we know with covenant, it is going to happen. And we've got to get our teachers trained. We've got to get our staff trained. This is going to include anybody who is in our district to be able to go to these trainings. And there was plenty of time for the back office here to contact the SROs and have them come in before they came in the other night. There was plenty, plenty, plenty of time. This guy is the premier. He is training our legislators. He is training the TBI. He was instrumental in the legislation that just passed last session to keep our schools safe. I think we can afford $25 from grant money that taxpayers are not paying to train our teachers. If they don't want to go, then it will be handled through HR, like Dr. Sullivan said. And we've all been to TSBA, NSBA, and they've all had security classes. And none of them rise to the excellence of this class. I've been to at least four of them for the last three or four years. And I'm sure if anybody in the audience wants to go, he'll, I'm sure he'll train you. He trained covenant. If it wasn't for his training and covenant, there would have likely have been a, a larger body count. And this is ridiculous that we're arguing over $25 to keep our school teachers and our staff safe. Anyone else?
I think one thing we can all agree upon tonight is that we all want our schools to be safe. We want to prevent a tragedy like we've seen in the news. I have lots of friends who are SROs. I have absolute faith in that the program started in this county. But I believe that this defense systems can be the first step, a launching pad. I had an analogy made to me today by a friend who is an SRO, say, sometimes you can tell your child or you can tell your team something, but when somebody else comes out from somewhere else, it just hits differently. And my thing, question is, is there any way that we can, I like the way we're breaking it up into two different sessions. If we get the first session and it doesn't do what we thought it does, it doesn't have the impact, do we necessarily, are we locked in to having the second one? Because I would like to at least give them a try.
I'll ask them to do two separate contracts.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say one comment. Safety is a concern, absolutely. I've been in a cat classroom and I sat through a situation that I made a life or death situation. I made a life or death situation when there was an unplanned, unexpected lockdown procedure. I didn't know what the heck was hoping. And you know the decision I made that day? Because I didn't know what was going on, because I've got kids crying. I made the decision that if anyone was not going to go home, it was going to be me. That's the decision I made. So I know what it feels like to be in this position. I may not be a permanent teacher, I'm a temporary teacher, but they feel the burden and they understand it. But this is a two-hour lecture to sit through shootings and to break it down and then an hour after, medical. If we're going to give something to our teachers, we need to, we need to look at it and make sure it's more of a robust training that includes also not just sitting through a lecture, but hands-on, what to do when it does happen, what to look for, what sounds, and et cetera. And it's not that about the cost of $25. Absolutely, $25 is something that we, that, that can be absorbed. But I think the point I'm trying to say is that our county public safety officers came to us and said they can offer this. Please let us, give us a chance and let us give you this first before we go to an outside vendor. And if it appears that the outside vendor, if it appears what we're giving is not adequate enough, then yes, let's go look outside of the vendor. But our county came to us because they were not asked to come to the table when this all started. And they wanted, they're asking and they're wanting us to hear them and to say, please give us a chance. And I think we ought to do that. That we were the first county that provided SROs, the very first county. So I feel like we owe them, if they're coming to us, to at least try and allow us to see what they have. And that's what I'm saying.
Could you read the motion back or would you like her to repeat the motion? Okay. Would you repeat the motion?
So the motion that I propose is in addition... As our county's trained public safety officers have extensive first responder and medical training and can provide ongoing training rather than one-time training for these factors, I move to utilize the county's trained public, public safety officers to provide security training, including firsthand medical training to our staff as well as hands-on training and, and, and this other than utilizing defense systems.
Thank you, and we've had a second.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If all training was the same, then TBI would not be using them. Higher education campuses wouldn't be using them. Other law enforcement wouldn't be using them. 160 other school districts wouldn't be using them. This is supplemental training. We are very grateful for what we have here. It's something to add to that. It's for all of the teachers. I still feel like it is something that is needed in our county that would be very useful. So I still stand.
Thank you. We're going to have a roll call vote.
Ms. Sharp? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosales?
Yes.
Mrs. Darby?
No.
Mr. Tidwell?
No.
Mrs. Maxwell?
No.
Mrs. Bratton?
No. I will now entertain another motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a move to approve and a second, we will have a roll call vote.
For clarity, excuse me.
You want me to read this motion again? Okay. The recommended motion is to approve the use of 147,500 from Safe Schools to be used to hire defense systems to train 5,900 personnel in intruder action and medical training for Rutherford County Schools as presented. I've had a motion and a second, we will have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosales?
No.
Mr. Tidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mrs. Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes. Our motion passes. Number 12, financial matters.
All right, so tab four, Fund 141 budget amendments. This amendment is to increase Fund 141 budgeted revenues and expenditures as well as decrease fund balance to move money that was donated in fiscal year 22-23 and fiscal year 23-24 to fund the supplies and materials for the implementation of chess in Rutherford County High Schools. The total amount of money moved from fund balance is 5,300. Revenue will increase 1,100 for the current fiscal year. These amounts equal 6,400, which is the increased amount of budgeted expenditures and supplies and materials in the GP budget. These funds will be used to purchase chessboards, set pieces, and clocks. Recommended motion to approve the GPS fund budget amendment of 6,400 of unassigned fund balance contributions, gifts, revenue, and supplies, materials, expenditures as presented in the detail.
Questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll entertain a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Our motion passes. Number two?
This amendment is to increase Fund 141 budgeted revenues and expenditures in the amount of $429,168 to recognize the awarded state special education pre-K grant for fiscal year 23-24. The funds will be used for additional education assistant positions to assist in the pre-K classrooms and additional training for teachers and EAs. Rutherford County Schools has 22 integrated preschool classes across the district that serve over 300 students. The money is afforded to us by this grant. I'm sure that all students will have access to highly trained teachers and staff to meet their educational needs. Recommended motion to amend the fiscal year 23-24 general purpose school budget to reflect the state special education pre-K grant award as presented.
Have any questions, comments, or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Number 13, engineering and construction.
So the first one we have is a request for Beatty Property mass grading bid, number 3711, on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, purchasing and engineering, construction received bids for the mass grading portion of the site work. All bids have been reviewed and engineering, construction recommends demo plus grading base bid for a total bid of $2,790,600. Engineering also recommends requesting a contingency of $250,000 and additional architectural fees of $600,000. All requested funds to be included in this final request for the complete project at a total of $3,640,600, and that breakdown's below. Recommended motion to approve request and forward to Health and Education for demo plus grading company for $2,790,600 and a total mass grading request for funding at $3,640,600. Also to approve the budget amendment to decrease account 3,900. GPS fund balance have increased 99,105,90 transfers to other funds in the amount of $3,640,600 as presented. And so ultimately, we are paying for this ourselves and not asking for the commission for any funding.
Questions, comments, or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Number two?
Number two, there is no motion. It was a request for Holloway High renovation for virtual school bid, number 3707. Bid date was November 30. Two contractors were at the mandatory pre-bid meeting, no bids received. So this project will be placed out for bid. Again, if we don't receive any, then we probably will need to circle back and see what we need to do with the virtual school.
Do, but besides putting them up on the website, do we like...
Yes, they go to the entire...
Talk to other vendors that have...
Yes.
Bid before?
They're, they're, they're carried through the firm that we use to print our plans. They have a plan room and they publicize it. It also gets publicized at a bidding program called the Dodge Room. It's where various contractors go to just look for bids and it's also published in some other publications. So it is out there.
Any other comments on that? We may have to come back and circle back and look at something else, but we trust you, Mr. ...
We've made some phone calls. We think we're going to have some different participation this time.
Okay, good, okay, good.
Yeah, for Dodge Room, there's over 10,000 projects put on there daily. So it's, it's not just a small, small thing.
Okay. Number three?
Number three, RFQ for architectural services. Recommended motion to approve the following companies as a result of having the highest three cumulative point totals amongst reviewers. I know there's four, but it was a tie for point totals. Goodwin Mills Kwood, Client Sweeney Associates, Walt Architects and Engineers, and then Sherman Carter Barnhart Architects. So anytime we have projects, these will be the companies we reach out to to say, what is your fee?
Okay. Questions, comments, or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Number 14.
Number 14, facility naming. Laverne Middle School Annex Cafeteria at the request of Principal Richard Reed. He'd like to name the Laverne Middle Annex Cafeteria to honor the work of the former principal, Dr. Holman, who served thousands of Thanksgiving meals over 13 years through his project feed initiative. Recommended motion to approve facility naming as presented. I would have invited him, but they also have meetings right now. And I'm not sure he wants to sit in another board meeting at this moment because he's sitting as Franklin County's Director of Schools. But once he does not have one, we'd love to have it back just to recognize him.
That would be nice, that would be nice.
Several of us saw him at TSBA, so it was good to see him.
Questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Number 15, facilities.
All right, number 15, facilities. So this is updating our five-year plan. It's been requested for the Board of Education to provide an updated five-year plan to the County Commission as soon as possible for future funding, planning, and considerations. So a couple of things, we looked at this the other night. You guys still have a copy of January 2023 and then you have a, an additional copy that has a blue line across the top. The blue line across the top is what I've stated on Tuesday night during our work session. I would move all of the Beatty Middle, North End High School, all of those up. It is a little bit different format because it is a five-year building plan, but you only see four years. That's because we are looking, at least my recommendation is to include current through June of '25. So that includes the rest of this year and all of next year. The only other thing that I would potentially look at is Laverne High School addition. In talking to Mr. Lee, we probably would feel better putting 45 million there instead of 35 million just to cover ourselves so that we're telling the county, hopefully hopefully it comes in like Smyrna did, well, well, well under budget. But it's also been a year since we bid Smyrna High School out. So, that would be my recommendation is to make Laverne High Edition forty-five to make that total four nineteen, which is very close to what we have talked to county about. You'll see then, so that includes, this year would be the Beatty Property Elementary, land for a North End, Laverne High Edition, Beatty Property Middle, and then a high school in the North End. That would include our budget request that we asked for in January at the Beatty School and as part of our budget cycle for this year. We would then look to add a middle school at Plainview or Walter Hill. And then you'll see, honestly, for school renovations, I placed two placeholders just with amount totals. Those would be whatever schools we designate to be the most at need at a future time. And then you'll see there's smaller amounts the next two years just to see what schools need. So, those numbers may change. But really, the, the big portions, you have a middle school, Plainview or Walter Hill, twenty-five, twenty-six, a high school, Walter Hill or Christiana, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then back to a, an elementary school on the North End, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Questions, concerns? Yes?
Looking over these two, I'm looking at some of the differences. So, you combined the first two years.
Correct.
As that recommendation, and then also, we've added, some of the difference in pricing is those school renovations each year.
Correct. School renovations, and then we upped the numbers just a little bit based on pricing. Let me look at, like when we did this last January, the high school, Walter Hill or Christiana, you'll see we thought it would be one hundred and thirty-seven million, and we know that based on current bids, it is nowhere near one hundred and thirty-seven million anymore. So, that's, that increased it a lot. Understood.
Typically, also, Mr. Tidwell, typically every year we relook at these. The projects typically move up and down, and yearly, we adjust the numbers based on what the current market is. So, that's part of the reason some of these numbers have changed since what you saw last week.
Yep, awesome. Well, not awesome, but thank you for the update.
Anyone else? Mr. Dr. Sullivan?
You've got Mr. Young.
Oh, Mr. Young. Say my name. You know I can't see.
I said, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
You can't hear either.
He's just quiet. He's quiet.
Quiet, Mr. Young.
It's hard to, let me, it's hard to hear.
Shout at me.
All right, I have just a question on the school renovations, thirteen million dollars. How do we know that's adequate?
We don't. It's just a placeholder because they wanted a number.
And we have no idea what school renovations we're looking at, what schools?
Not until we go through and prioritize, no. I would have much rather passed a five-year plan later on, but we have a, and we can always, of course, update our five-year plan at any time. For example, if we're going to do a school renovation, I couldn't imagine thirteen million would touch McFadden. But if it was a different school at first, that would give us those options.
This is the.
It will be revisited, yeah.
This is the area where I think we really need to be focusing more on. I was still listening to vendors in here for a couple of hours the other night. I think we should have been working on this plan, but that's just my two cents.
Ms. Breiten?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I agree. We do need to have a comprehensive plan, and we should be paying, focused on this a lot more considering that we are going to be asking close to three hundred and fifteen million dollars to the county commissioner, and this plan tends to change every year. And so, if we're going to be asking county commissioners for money, we need to have a plan that's a little bit more solid, at least for two years, instead of going back and revisiting every year because things are starting, get changed all the time, and then it's really hard for the county commissioners to know what exactly to fund for us because things start to change year after year. So, if we're going to be looking at this, I would like to see this being not necessarily a five-year plan, but a plan that we commit to for two years and then bring back for, for revision two years after that. So, at least we can give time to get, for the county commissioners to get the funding, and as things start to get funded and constructed, then things can roll off the list, and then we can revisit and add the things that we need.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My recommendation would be not to change this. We have to stop changing it all the time. That's why I put through twenty-twenty-five. That gives us eighteen months where we don't update it. And then outside of that, these locations are all based on where our zoning lines look like they needed. I agree a hundred percent. We have to get out of changing this every single year because this is what they need to know we need. The only update I would have would be, you're exactly right, we need a comprehensive plan. Ms. Sharp's talked about it a lot as well to see what do our older facilities need. But I don't anticipate a need to change additional schools unless the, the only thing I could see changing is if somehow growth completely slowed down, removing one.
Ms. Breiten?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have one more question. So, this is, okay, so in this plan, my question, because it really doesn't speak to it, last year's plan, we had the addition for Blackman High School. And because of the rezoning, we moved quite an area that traditionally has been Blackman is now moved to Segal. So, how does this fall in line with this plan to where that area is, should be, should be zoned to Blackman? So, where in this plan will that fit to change that rezoning?
I've asked Rob and RSP to have something by January. It may be February, but to have a rezoned plan that incorporates a new high school.
Okay. So, are we voting for this today because we need to send this to the county commissioners?
Correct, yes.
Yes. And you said RSP is going to bring this?
They're going to bring a proposal for zoning. That's not going to change the need for the new high school. But I asked them to, just like they did for the middle school, to go back and give us an option to, if we got funding for a new high school, where would it be?
And so, where in the plan will that impact? That will be the August twenty-seventh high school in North End?
Yep.
That rezoning to, where that area will be zoned back to Blackman High School?
And I will tell you, if we can get a new high school online, it'll probably be my recommendation to go back in nine months, like we talked about before it does, and, and hold that spot and not rezone it. It wouldn't make sense to rezone somebody for two years and rezone them right back.
Okay, thank you.
Which I believe is why we're revisiting that, right? I think that turned out very, very well. Thank you, Ms. Darby.
Can I add one more thing?
You certainly may.
The only other concern I have is this is, we do have a, a meeting on December eighteenth with our, members of our delegation, several members of the county commission and the mayor. There were some comments in an article about potential revenue and that if, regardless of where the revenue comes from, we have to have revenue to build schools. And it was a, a comment that was made by our executive branch that vetoing executive or any type of extra tax increases would be there. And so, that was, that was a concern. I hope that we can definitely work together and avoid that because I have no idea where to put the students if we don't have funding. And that's, as a school system, I don't know where they go.
Could I ask, because we are moving some things around and making some changes, can we get an updated one that says where you're moving things? I, I didn't get that. I'm sorry. I have one now, thank you. Mine's green, and yours is blue. There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Is he special?
Yes, he's so special. I will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Next?
Next, we have Legal, Tab Six, Disciplinary Hearing Appeal, number twenty-three, twelve oh one. The Board's been requested to review a decision of the Disciplinary Hearing Authority, DHA, to uphold the expulsion of a student from Oakland Middle School. As required by policy, the Director of Schools has also reviewed the expulsion, upheld the decision of the DHA. Based on the DHA's record, the Board may, and this is a level four, so the Board can do any of these three, A, affirm the decision of the DHA, B, overturn the decision of the DHA, or C, grant a hearing before the Board. Recommended approval, motion for the Board to initiate in line with one of the above options presented.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant a hearing.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to grant a hearing? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Sorry? It fails. It's okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There is a second one in this file folder, but I don't see it in the agenda.
There's a second.
It's down. The other one is out of county.
Out, the out-of-county student.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I'll now entertain.
Oh, it's at the bottom of the policies. That's why I don't see it. Sorry.
That's okay. I, I know it's thick. I'll now take another motion, please.
I move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes to affirm the decision of the DHA. Number two, policy adoption.
So, number two, policy adoption. This is the first and final reading. The below policy changes recommended on the first and final reading. Policy six point three zero two, procedural due process clarifies due process for student discipline. So, recommended approval of two motions. First, you would need the motion to suspend Board Policy one point six zero zero, specifically waive the two readings requirement for the above policy, and then second, motion to adopt on the first and final read the above policy. And all this one does is clarify student discipline due process.
Take questions or concerns? I'll take a motion on the first motion.
Make a motion to suspend.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. I will now take a motion on the second motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. I'll take a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. The three policy changes.
So, policy changes, the first of two readings, and I will read these. This is the first one. I read quickly. So, first one, so Policy one point one zero five, School Board Legislative Involvement, Changes of the Term Representative to Liaison Pursuant to State Guidance. B, Policy one point two zero five, Board Director Relations, Adds Process for Obtaining Additional Information by Board Members. C, Policy one point seven zero one, School District Planning, Adds Language for Submitting TISA Accountability Report Pursuant to Change in State Guidance. D, Policy three point two zero eight, Facilities Planning, Adds Language that Needs Assessment Presented to the Board Will Include Recommendations for Future Growth. E, Policy four point two zero five, Enrollment in Advanced Courses, Removes Section Regarding Substitution for Certain Courses As This Information Is Contained in Policy four point six zero five. F, Policy four point six zero zero, Grading System, Updates Language to Mirror State Board of Education Policies. G, Policy four point six zero two, Grade Point Average, Updates Language to Mirror State Board of Education Policies. H, Policy four point six zero four, Credit for Prior Courses, Removes American History as an Exception for Prior Courses Pursuant to State Board of Education Policies. I, Policy four point six zero four one, Testing for Credit, Updates Language to Mirror State Board of Education Policies. J, Policy four point six zero five, Graduation Requirements, Updates Language to Mirror State Board of Education Policies. K, Policy four point six zero six, Graduation Activities, Clarifies Distinctions for Graduation Activities. L, Policy five point four zero two, Hepatitis B, HBV, Updates List of Employees Who Are in Positions of High Risk of Occupational Exposure. M, Policy six point two zero one, Compulsory Attendance Ages, Clarifies Admission for Students Over Eighteen Years of Age. N, Policy six point three one seven, Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority, Clarifies Number of Days for Appeals. And then O, Policy six point four one five, Student Suicide Prevention, Adds Clarifying Language for Resources Available and Recommended for Returning to School. I think we're missing a motion here, so I would recommend a motion to approve these on the first read, and the next board meeting will be the second.
Thank you. I will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Next?
All right, for out-of-county transfer one, the Board's been requested to admit a transfer student from another school system under discipline. The student was expelled for one year for possession of a THC vape and for a false report of another student being in possession of a firearm. According to Policy six point three one eight, the Board may deny admissions of any student except those in state custody when a student transfers from another school system while under suspension or expulsion. Director of Schools' recommendation is to deny admission. Recommended a motion to admit or deny the admission of this out-of-county transfer student as presented.
Thank you. Questions? I'll take a motion.
Move to deny admission. Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishes to abstain? Motion is to deny admission. Number seventeen, resolution.
Tab seven. Mr. Reed, do you want to do the resolution portion?
This is a resolution regarding the calculation of school grades. The State of Tennessee Department of Education has issued new metrics by which to score schools by letter grades. One of the metrics is student achievement scores on written tests. A number of our schools have a high number of ESL students for which English is not their native language, and frequently, such students score lower on written tests as they are in the still-in-the-process becoming proficient and fluent in English. Schools with higher percentages of ESL students should not be penalized due to their achievement scores being lower than other schools with a lower percentage of ESL students. Growth metrics remain a better measure of evaluating the educational needs and benefits conferred upon ESL students than achievement test scores. So, the attached resolution asks the state to take action to exclude the achievement scores of ESL students in TISA tiers one through three from the school, the letter grades of a school. And since we considered this on Tuesday night, we've added to the resolution the specific data for Rutherford County, and we read the resolution then. I can read it again, but the data, the sections which we added to the resolution was, we had, we have fifteen percent of our schools, of our students in the school system are ESL students, and twenty-five percent of the families have, of students in our school system have families that come from non-English speaking backgrounds. So, it's probably a much higher percentage than most people realize. So, I'll say that again. We have fifteen percent of our students who are ESL students, and we have twenty-five percent of the students in our school system come from families for which English is not their native language, which is a higher percentage than most people would probably realize. The specific numbers in Rutherford County is, last year we had, in two thousand twenty-two, we had six thousand fifty-five ESL students. In two thousand twenty-three, we have seven thousand four hundred thirty-one ESL students. So, it's a significant increase in the, in the scope of one year. So that is likely, as the county grows, that likely is, that number is likely continue to grow again. So I won't read the whole resolution in its entirety again tonight, but what you're asking, what the resolution asked the legislature to do is that the Board of Education is asking the state legislature to adopt legislation by which the achievement score of ESL students in tiers one through three are excluded from the calculation of the letter grades of a school. And that's what this resolution asked.
Thank you. Ms. Sharp?
Thank you. I had a couple of texts from Tuesday night. We are not asking for them to be excluded from the test. We are asking for the test scores to be excluded from the TESA funding. And we've spoken about this in depth and a lot of people don't know, when some of these students come here, they come from other countries, they had no formal training. So they're not students that have come from another country that was in the fourth grade and they're going to the fourth grade. They're students that come here that have no.
Formal schooling.
No formal schooling, that's what I'm trying to say. So our teachers have students that are coming in not below grade level. They're at a huge deficit and this is going to be very detrimental to our county and to our students and to our teachers.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Rosales for coming up with this and I would like to thank Mr. Young for putting in that specific statistical language. I think that makes the resolution much stronger.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
I need to correct something that you said, Ms. Sharp, because it's on camera. We're not excluding them from the TESA funding. We're excluding them from the letter grade A through F score, scoring.
That's right.
They're still going to get, we're still going to get the funding.
No, I didn't say that we weren't.
Yeah, you said TESA funding. And so when you were speaking, maybe you did not realize that, but that's what came, maybe you did not mean to say that, but that's what came out. And so I wanted to clarify.
No, it affects our TESA funding.
Well, it's, the resolution deals with the A through F, right? This is what the resolution deals with.
Right. So I just want to make it clear that we need the funding, so this does not take away that. It's, we're asking them, because they're changing the accountability assessment model from going, from looking at the growth of a child to determine where the, the, the scoring for that, and it's moving more towards the achievement that's absolute than this resolution says because of the language barrier. And this is coming from someone that is, that what, that technically I will say, I will, I'm still am an EL student who came into this country without not knowing any, hardly any English. I understand the, the impact of that. And so this is a way to get the scoring a little bit more balanced for those schools that have a higher percentage of that demographic. So this is more leveling the, evening the playing field and for the students to really be counted more towards the growth side aspect of the A through F letter grade score cut. So they're not excluded entirely, they're just excluded from a piece of it, a portion of it.
I think for people listening in, you should know that this is a pretty firm stand for, for a board to take, to, to go back and ask that legislators look at this, but we think it's very, very important. We don't believe the A through F system is going to be fair to those of us who teach our children from other countries. And I see principals back there just nodding up and down like this. So it's, it's a resolution that we feel like would help, as you said, to even the playing field just a little bit when it comes to funding. So any more questions or?
Just real quickly, I, you know, I, I think this is a fair resolution because we are tasked, it's a huge undertaking with the numbers that have been coming to us, you know, over a thousand in just a year. But we need the A through F system to be more fair to those students and it's not fair to penalize our county. Dr. Sullivan made a comment that even I, knowing the numbers are, are just exponentially growing every year, when he said there is many ESL students in Rutherford County as Davidson County, that took my breath away. I had no idea it was that, that many.
Percentage wise, yes.
Yeah. So this is a very fair, we're not asking to do away with the A through F, whether you like the A or F, it's coming. We just want something that's fair, fair to our students and fair to our schools.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
At the work session, it was pointed out, I just want to point that out again, that our growth, you know, all of these things are true, but also the growth that we've had recently, fifty-three percent of our students that's, has been in the ESL student population. So not only do we have the population, but it's growing at a rapid pace. So whatever decisions come out of this, which we hope they'll accept the resolution, would make a tremendous difference for our county.
Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Sullivan?
And I will add to Mr. Tidwell, the, I think Ms. Turnbull is there, I think almost sixty percent of those fifty-three percent kids are newcomers to us. So fifty-nine percent, is that rough, of the right, fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine. Good conversation. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Resolution motion passes. Number eighteen, thank you, Mr. Reed, and thank you for getting that done. We know it was short notice and we appreciate it. Lease agreement?
Tab eight, extension of all state lease at eight fourteen South Church Street. All state insurance companies requesting a three month extension of their lease at eight fourteen South Church Street. They've acquired a new space to move into, but the build out will not be complete until sometime in March. Mr. Lee confirms the three month extension will not interfere with the school system plans to remodel the building, draft the amendment to the lease is attached. Recommended motion to approve extending the all state lease until March thirty first, two thousand twenty-four is presented.
Do I have any questions, comments, or concerns? I'll entertain.
I'm sorry. Do we already have a company that's ready to do this?
Madam Chairman, was that?
Madam Chairman.
We're working on that.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
It's late.
No.
Do we have a company that?
Now, if you remember, in November, we waited till we had an architect, so now that the architect's bill approved, we'll do that tomorrow.
Maybe they can do Holloway too?
Maybe. We already had an architect for Holloway, that was correct, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Number nineteen, financial report.
We did at the work session.
That's what we did. Number twenty, director's update.
All right. So two things, one, we had State Senator Shane Reeves visit today to schools and so we did it kind of off the public channel a little bit, just so that he could truly see what schools were like in the middle of operation without somebody preparing for it. So we had genuine conversations, went to Rock Springs Middle School and then Smyrna Primary School. I appreciate him being, having that vested interest in our schools and he was, he was shocked at the way that our student enrollment and demographic has shifted from the last time he was in some of our schools. So I really appreciate him being there. Second, I did want to just hit on, we've mentioned A through F letter grading just a little bit, since this is our last board meeting before that becomes public. As the director of schools, sometimes I have to take a strong stance and this is something that I a hundred percent believe in taking a strong stance on, so I appreciate the resolution. To give everybody a little bit, I don't think anybody necessarily has a, a huge issue with the A through F portion. We realize that's coming. It's been in state law since two thousand sixteen. It is Tennessee code annotated forty-nine, one, two, twenty-eight. And there's a couple issues that I have with the way that that law is being implemented currently. First, it says implementation of the school grading system shall begin in twenty-seven, eighteen school year, provided however, prior to implementation, the state board shall review the grading scale developed by the department. So that was done, I believe, at the end of October. So they presented it to the State Board of Education. You'll notice that, yes, the legislator set this law, but the department has full control over the accountability model. The part that's probably the most concerning is the department shall provide notice of the adopted grading scale to each LEA prior to the start of, and now we're way past twenty-seven, eighteen. But we have an accountability model that is going to be releasing a grading system that we still do not know what it looks like. I'll read from the commissioner's update today to directors of school. We get this every Thursday. On Thursday, December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the department will release A through F letter grades for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year on a newly created school letter grades dashboard. This dashboard will host school letter grades for schools and departments developing explainer resources and additional information to provide stakeholders a deep understanding. Letter grades will be available to districts to preview starting on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. That is six days from now, with additional information for the preview window coming soon. So that is six days. I still have no idea what the accountability system looks like. I know that achievement is a portion, I know growth is a portion, we know that there's two other portions as well, but as far as what is the, the cutoff, I have no idea. And so that's, that's very frustrating. I'm a self-proclaimed data nerd. We've been taking over curriculum instruction. We taught our teachers the accountability protocol. That is what we're used to doing. We will follow whatever game and system and accountability model that we need to play, we just need to know what it is. And so our public is probably wondering where are reward schools? We always announce reward schools in September. There are no reward schools because there's not a system right now for reward schools. And so that's, that's very frustrating for our schools. Just to give you a little bit of background, without going too far, we were expecting reward schools in August. We were notified there was going to be a change in accountability in the middle of August. There was four days' notice before public hearings started and then we received a phone call inviting us to come to a public hearing that we didn't even know was going to exist. I think the frustrating part is, you can imagine that when you are being measured, it's not only our schools and our community, but it's our teachers, it's their livelihood being measured on a system that they don't know exists. So why am I passionate about it? I served under Governor Haslam with his TCAP ambassador program that really went through the state and we were charged with making sure we talked about accountability and built support for TCAP. And so I have a vested interest and I just don't, I don't feel confident in what has been done. TDOE over the, and that's the Tennessee Department of Education, and this is the last thing I'll say, has been a partner with school systems in the past. It is definitely wrong is the right word to say, how districts are being treated at this point. And there have been changing targets, the targets are moving after students have already been assessed. There's a lack of communication and transparency and I don't think it is any surprise at all that the data is coming out December twenty-first, the day districts close and when the State Department goes on holiday break. So we are willing to partner, at least our team is in the department, or in our central office, but these current practices are not sustainable whatsoever. Our English, as a second language department, got notified on Friday that we had to upload almost seventy-five hundred individual learning plans with a deadline of December thirteenth. I applaud Senator Reeves because within four hours, I got a phone call from the Department of Education. That is the first phone call I've gotten by the Department of Education this year. And so I greatly appreciate him and I will get off my soapbox, but our community's going to hear about it very soon and it is very frustrating because we're six days away from it being released to me and I still don't know what I'm being measured on. And this was from test results from last year. Our kids tested last April and I still don't know the measurements, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was a very good explanation. Anything else? And Ms. Rosales, she said you would wait and have a report for us in January.
Yep. There's a lot more coming.
Okay. Thank you so much. We are now on general discussion and I would like to call on Trey Lee. He would like to make some introductions to us.
Well, quickly, before I do that, is the property that we briefly discussed the other night, y'all asked for some information on it. It's a new piece of property that was brought to us, thirty-one oh six Stewart's Creek Road. It's probably a half to three quarters of a mile from the Brewer farm that we've looked at. The first page is the location of an, the property off the GIS. It's actually closer to Baker Road. The second page in your packet, which is a color aerial Google Maps view, it's ninety percent wooded, so you're welcome, we, we can plan to go look if you want, but there's not a lot to see. The third page you see is our soils report based on what the county shows. It's going to be very difficult for there to be enough soils in those two places probably to support two schools, but it's something we could look into. The next is the topographic image of the property. All the lines close together indicates very steep. There, there's a pretty significant hill on this piece of property. So there's a lot of elevation change to it. The last page that you have is basically just a proximity map. The top right is the property that we're looking at, thirty-one oh six. The bottom left is the Brewer property that we've already previously looked at. The property is eighty acres.
What's the elevation, Mr. Lee? Do you know the elevation?
I can get those elevations. It's about a hundred and twenty feet from bottom to top and it's fairly significant piece of the property.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Lee, the property that joins that, that looks like it may have some Arizona soil, would that be available?
It's a different owner. I have not talked to that owner. Most of that is already part of the Brewer, the, the property that the Brewers have already turned loose. It's in between the two pieces.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
As far as the road, I remember that the road was an issue on one of the properties that we were looking at. Is this going to be similar issues? Trey?
Yes, it will be same similar problem. And the answer to your question, Mr. Young, I apologize, the piece in between is, is the part that's already under development, so it's not available and it's being utilized by them. In fact, the back half of that, the part that's adjacent to this piece, they're not utilizing because it's too steep. They're going to leave it alone. But yes, we would have the same problems with the roads. Yes, sir.
Mr. Lee? And I'm sorry if I didn't catch it. Eighty acres. What school type will it fit?
It would be, i- if it was all maximized, it would be a high school, but we, I, I don't see us being able to maximize the usage of all of it. So then we would be looking at either at that acreage, we could be an elementary and a middle, but it would still, the site work would be fairly extensive.
A middle. So how does this aligns with that property, the closest one?
The Brewer property?
Yeah.
Yes. It's actually, the property that we're looking at is a better piece of property. It has more soils, it has less elevation and it's probably sixty percent open.
Brewer, Brewer property. Brewer property. Not the new property, yeah.
No, I know that. I know you're talking about the other property that we're looking at. And that one, it's a middle school, correct?
It would be a high school.
I mean, yes.
It's, it's enough acreage. It would be either a high school or an elementary and a middle.
Oh, it can fit all three.
No, it won't be all three, it'd be.
I'm sorry.
One or two.
Oh, got it. Okay, sorry about that.
Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
When we're finished with this.
Okay. You want to say something?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
What you're trying to do?
I'm trying to get in on the, on the line.
Oh, all right. Trey has something else that he wants.
Well, I had four of my project managers here, but three of them have bailed Tony's fault. Tony's still here, so.
Tell him to stand up.
Stand up, Tony. I'm requiring our project managers to come at least a couple times a year. Now, I know the principals, it's in their contract. I don't have a contract with my guys, but I've bent their arms this year that they need to come, be a little more visible with you guys. They do a lot of work. They do a lot of great work. They know most of our principals, they know them. But I told them in the event that I get run over by a bus, one of them may have to step in, at least y'all need to recognize their face.
Recognize a face, at least, okay.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Ms. Sharp, you had something you wanted to add?
General discussing, yes. Ms. Reed, would you come back to the podium, please? This is going to give some people the vapors and some people are going to be jumping up and down and screaming, so just go ahead and put your seatbelt on. So just go ahead and put your seatbelt on. So we received an email from TSBA yesterday asking us to join with the other school districts in opposing the vouchers. So I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Reed to start working on that verbiage and then our next school board meeting, we can put forward the resolution and sign the resolution and join TSBA and the other districts here with opposing the vouchers.
Thank you.
I'll get that ready, yes.
Thank you so much. You can work on that, we can look at it, you're talking about the first meeting in January, perhaps.
Have it ready in January.
Yeah, okay. That would be great. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I want to thank you, Ms. Sharp, because I know that sometimes that unfortunately these roles can be political and I know that's a step out, so I appreciate you looking at what's best for school systems for sure.
I think it's best and looking at it now, I know the legislation is not finished, but everything that I've seen right now is it is not fair. It's going to move some people to the back of the line that have already been here and it's also going to give students more money to go to the private schools than what we actually receive per student.
Yes.
Here without the weights for ESL or whatever the weights are, all the weights are. So, you know, there's a lot of people who think because we're a certain party or this, that, or the other, there are times that you can look at things and it's just common sense and this, this is one of them, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Yes, I would like to recognize the principals. Go ahead. Dr. Sullivan?
I want to make sure we have Christie Brown, who is at John Coleman Elementary School. We have Jennifer Clark, who is at Rocky Fork Middle School. We have April Sneed at Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. We have Dr. Sherri Sutherland, who is at Smyrna High School. Am I missing anybody? Nope. We had Justin Smith earlier and then Ms. Blackman and then Nicole Takiam, our assistant principal at Smyrna, left, so. I always like to recognize them.
Absolutely, we appreciate you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Tidwell?
I just wanted to do a little recognizing as well. One of our Rockville juniors, Aiden Sinclair, for being the boys golfer of the year on the all-area team. City council is recognizing him tonight, so we couldn't steal him. And then also George Moisant, an Oakland student, finished a collage of staff and students from the early 1900s to today for Oakland High School for an Eagle Scout project that another staff member was working on. I'm not sure if Sullivan made the cut, but you could check it out to see. And then, and then I have a piece of trivia for the board. Who scored 2,638 points, a school record for men and women, and whose favorite book is Where the Red Fern Grows? Any answers? Anybody want to buzz in?
I wonder who that could be. Who is...
Yes.
We love to embarrass me, Dr. Jackson.
Dr. Chastain loves being the center of attention.
Definitely, yes.
That is not her thing, and you know it.
If, if we could post this on the RCS Facebook, that would be great.
I already have a picture of it, I'm working on it, so.
Ms. Sharp?
I'm glad my cheerleading pictures aren't available. I'm sorry, I forgot. This weekend, Roy Waldron and Stewart's Creek High School have their Christmas shops. I went last week, that's where I got this. It was a crew of five, and there's, y'all, there's all kinds of stuff. If you're looking for something unique and want to support our schools, Roy Waldron's nine to five on, on Saturday. I think Stewart's Creek, is it 10 to four or something? Y'all look on their, their Facebook, but they both have fantastic arts and crafts, and you can get some homemade Christmas presents. We celebrate Christmas.
Thank you. Dr. Sullivan?
I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Martin, she's back from Budget already. Her and Runyon somehow were, was it unanimous vote? Congratulations.
Thank you. We're glad to have you back.
I will be staying here, and she will be going to Budget from now on.
I think that's really smart.
She doesn't look disheveled at all.
Uh, as we close the meeting, I would like to make one suggestion. I would like to suggest that we close the central office from December 22nd through December 26th for this year.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can just nod. Everybody would like to see this, do this. We don't have to vote on it.
It's one day, yeah. It is one extra day.
It's one extra day.
We already closed the 22nd and 25th, so it adds the 26th.
Hey, we're, we're doing the best we can here. We're, we're just plowing along.
It's well deserved.
Madam Chair, I just thought of one, one, one quick thing. The Christmas parade in Borfishboro is Sunday afternoon, and in the past, we've had some of our bands participating.
Yeah, we will.
Do we have some bands this year as well?
More than we could probably ever imagine.
That's great. That's wonderful.
They always, yes.
Anyone else?
Last year, even Antioch Band was in it. That confused me, I was confused.
They were in, that was strange.
It was very strange.
The Smyrna Christmas Parade was last Sunday, I was there.
I will be in the, the Christmas parade.
I'll see you. You're not singing, are you, Ms. Jackson?
I'm not singing. I will be with my little black and white cocker spaniel. My husband's walking with our big white dog, but the cocker can't make it a mile and a half, so we're going to ride in the fire truck, so.
Don't want to miss that, folks. Tune in. Do we have anything else? Are we ready for Ms. Darby?
Move to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.